I was born in Hamtramck.
That's where our sea wolves go when they get called up.
Yeah. Born in Hamtramck is the old Polish.
Better than they get dragged.
Hamtramck. Oh, yeah.
Good for them.
I'm almost from here, but we came back here when I was a kid.
We got three people on Zoom right now. Do you have any Zooms on?
We have that so far. And then Chris Groner will be joining too. The rest are City Zoom Administrator.
Director of Communications is going to do that today? Mr. Nelson? I'm teasing you.
That's not my branch.
Are you just trying to make trouble?
Of course.
Not today. Just not do it.
I'll be good. Okay. Namaste.
How long was that going to last? Something like a tiny. Jackson was like, it's been a long day, right? Multiple.
Is this streaming on Facebook?
Yes.
All right. Next one, people are watching online, but maybe it was just, maybe it was just a stream.
It's just the stream, yeah.
All right. Let me get this in.
Okay. Yep, and just quickly, I want to thank you all for coming tonight. I know it's a beautiful night and it's been a long day, but we have an exciting tool to share with you. And we've got Randy Patterson here from Lancaster to give you some insights into lessons learned from Lancaster. They applied for and received a CRIS back in 2013, and so they have a lot of experience with implementing it and successfully, I might add. Randy was Director of the Department of Economic Development and Neighborhood Revitalization in Lancaster when they started their application and initially administered the program from that office. Then when, upon retiring from the city, he was hired as the Executive Director to manage the CRIS. And he's been instrumental in that work there. And so again, he's here to talk to us about their experiences there. And we, you know, we've been in conversations with Harrisburg. The application has not been reopened since 2013, but now they're looking at reopening it. And we've been given the go-ahead to start working on an application. So that's why we wanted to proactively get working on this because there are a lot of elements to the application and a lot of work to be done. And so I'm going to turn it over to Randy to share his experiences with you. Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Renee. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to tell you a little bit about Lancaster's CRIS program and the CRIS program in general. The idea here to really give you the knowledge of what the program is, what it can do, what it can accomplish, so you can see how it can benefit the city of Erie, okay? So I have a long PowerPoint presentation. I know you're tired. So am I. I was, I'm still jet-lagged from traveling, so if I stumble a little bit, forgive me. But I'm going to go through the slides quickly. You have them in front of you to read at your leisure at other times. So not the greatest acronym, CRIS. Everybody wants to know what it means, and it's a long title, City Revitalization Improvement Zone. It's the name of the legislation and the tax code that created this program. There are only seven cities in the state of Pennsylvania that can apply for the CRIS program. Erie is one of those seven. Page down or?
I'll just.
That's what I'm doing, but it's not moving.
Yeah.
Sure. So up and down?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay. So what is a CRIS? So it was established by Pennsylvania law, but it's not a program established by the General Assembly. It's part of the tax code. And that's only important to know in how the program's administered. There are three agencies that actually have authority over this particular program. It's the Department of Revenue, Department of Community and Economic Development, and the Office of Budget. So all three agencies actually are involved in the program. Its real purpose was to help communities who have been struggling to redevelop their downtowns. We all hit that point in the late 60s and 70s where our downtowns kind of went dead as people moved to the suburbs and shopping malls were created. So it created a lot of underutilized property, a lot of vacant property. The CRIS program is a program that can help you address those properties. It's an area comprised of properties. It's 130 acres. The area is designated by the CRIS Authority, the authority that you will be asked to create by resolution. And it captures state and local taxes that are then returned to the CRIS Authority and distributed to projects that are part of the application or that may arise during the lifetime of the CRIS program. So in 2013, Lancaster created its CRIS Authority. City Council created the Authority, and it allowed us to capture those state and local property tax, excuse me, state and local taxes, not property taxes. As I said, they're returned back annually. So that's a key point of the program. You get an annual allocation of funds coming back to the city of Erie that it can depend on during the lifetime of the program as opposed to applying for individual grant programs through the state, competing with every other city across the state of Pennsylvania. These are dollars that are dedicated to the city of Erie. Our municipal Authority was a bipartisan Board of Directors. It was appointed by the mayor of the city of Lancaster and the Lancaster State Senator. Our Board of Directors include residents, business owners, property owners, nonprofits, and local government representatives. Our 130 acres looks like this. And the reason this is important is that the areas do not need to be contiguous, but they need to be strategic. So you have a lot of existing plans within the city of Erie. You have Activating Our Vision, you have Infinite Erie, you have Erie Refocused Action Plan, the Downtown Master Plan, you have your Comprehensive Plan. The opportunity for the CRIS program is to focus attention on key projects in all of those and bring them to reality with the resources for the CRIS program. And as you'll see in our map, we have a core area in the core of the downtown. That's in the center of the map. And then we have areas in our, three of our four neighborhoods' quadrants in the city of Lancaster. So when we talk about.
Okay, one second. You said property taxes are not involved?
They are not. And I've got another slide that'll detail that a little bit more. So in Lancaster, when we applied, we actually didn't have an economic development strategic plan in place like you have here in Erie. So we actually created our plan and put it together. And as we were doing it, we created Building on Strength, which is very similar to Infinite Erie. It has a list of projects that we can invest in in the city of Lancaster, and CRIS created the resource to bring those to bear. And this map just shows you how the CRIS overlays with the key areas of those other strategic plans that we have. So Building on Strength is the area in gold. It looks at the major corridors coming into and out of the city, the core of the downtown. And our Downtown Improvement District is the blue hashed area, and then the red is the So in our CRIS program, not all CRIS programs are alike. We have 500-plus businesses in our CRIS program. And the CRIS program is property-based, so it's based on property identification, but the businesses that are working in those properties are the ones that are generating the taxes that would then come back to fund the CRIS program. So we have 500. The key to this number is that annually, those 500 businesses must file a report, both with the city and with the state, on the taxes they generated in the prior year. So they would report in June of this year for taxes they generated in June, in January, in 2022, okay? So you're always a year behind, and then the money actually comes the following year. The key here is compliance, so it's critical. So if your businesses don't report, or they report zero, which the state would accept, the CRIS dollars would not come forward. So the key is really developing that relationship with your business community and the partners in that business community, your Chamber of Commerce, your Downtown Improvement District Authority, and others, to create this relationship with their businesses so that they see the importance of reporting annually. So here's the key of CRIS. I call it the additionality of CRIS. I don't even think it's a word, but it works. So if you look at the chart, if you look at the chart, you have X and Y axes, but there's two blue lines in the middle of that chart. So the bottom line is what's called our baseline. So the very first year of your program, all those businesses will report, the state will certify those numbers, and that creates your baseline. Those dollars continue to flow through to the state and to the city. What goes to the CRIS is the increase in that after the first year. So it's kind of like your LURDA program. Your LURDA program does property taxes. This one does not, but it works on the same premise, so the increase in property taxes are used to reinvest. Here, the increase in state and local taxes are used to reinvest. So what are the key state taxes? And state tax list is longer than the local tax list, intentionally. The majority of your revenue will come from the state taxes. So you have corporate taxes, you have personal income taxes paid by shareholders of limited partnerships that invest in properties, you have capital stock and franchise taxes, bank share tax, sales and use tax, state hotel occupancy tax. If you have a county tax, that's not included. Personal income tax for work performed in the CRIS, and this is important also to local taxes, only for work that's performed in the CRIS. So if it's not in those 130 acres, the state still receives those personal income taxes. It's only for work in the zone. And then here's the two, one key, when all taxes paid for the purchase or sale of liquor, wine, and malt beverages. So bars, restaurants generate a significant amount of revenue for a CRIS program above the baseline year, as long as their businesses continue to grow. And then, construction activity within the CRIS can also, on a shorter-term basis, provide CRIS increment from sales tax that a contractor's paying and the employees, as long as they work and live in the city. The local taxes are only four. You only have three of the four that are eligible. So you have the local services tax, you have the local earned income tax, and again, only for work performed within the CRIS and only by residents of the city of Erie. So if somebody works in the CRIS but lives outside of Erie County, those earned income taxes still go to that municipality. So it's only if you live and work in the CRIS. And then the city's amusement tax, but again, only if that property would be included in 130 acres. So in Lancaster, our baseball stadium is included for a reason I'll explain, but Lancaster does not have an amusement tax. So if your baseball stadium would have been included or would be included, then yes, the amusement tax they pay, the growth in that, again, the growth in that tax wouldn't be included. The fourth one is business privilege tax, which the city of Erie does not have, and neither does Lancaster. The key is property taxes are not included. So as you see investment in the CRIS, and quite frankly, outside the CRIS because of CRIS investment, you will see property tax revenues increase as those properties are reassessed, as they're redeveloped. So just, I don't want to harp on it, but it's important that you understand how the baseline's calculated and its impact on your tax revenues. So again, the baseline is calculated the very first year, but it will change every year because every year, as a business reports, a business may close. So that's going to change your baseline. That business's baseline tax number is then deducted from the baseline. So you will, over the lifetime of the program, see the baseline adjusted, but only because of businesses that close or businesses that come in and then create a new baseline. Again, if a business doesn't report for the baseline year and they report the following year, that's their baseline year. So every business that's in the CRIS has to have a baseline. So the first time they report, whenever that would be, that's their baseline year. And then.
But if the business isn't in Pennsylvania and they come here, then there's no baseline. They're coming in at zero.
Right. So if a business moves from Erie County into the CRIS, they have to be in the CRIS for a year, and then their baseline is established for that year that they were in. If a business moves outside of Pennsylvania, so from Cleveland, a business moves into the Erie CRIS, there is no baseline. It's zero. So the full increment of taxes created by that business on state and local side goes to the CRIS program. So the key here to the increment, so that annual report, the state certifies that number. So they'll look at the records they have on file at the Department of Revenue with taxes paid by the businesses within your CRIS, and they will certify a number. You don't really have the opportunity to argue about that number. It's established by the state. We have a person that's hired by the Lancaster program that goes in and reviews their certification and points out any glaring mistakes, like this business did report and they said it didn't report kind of thing. But the state will not adjust that increment. And the reason is it happens quickly. So businesses report by June 15th, state certifies their program by October 15th, and by the end of October, the check is cut. So there's really not time for anyone to go in and audit their certification. But you need to keep on your toes to make sure your businesses are reporting because, like I said, if a business reports zero but reports, the state will accept zero. So even though they may have a record that says they paid $10,000 in personal income tax, they reported zero, so the state certifies zero. So that's the other part of the business relationship, to make sure businesses understand the importance of reporting accurately. This is just how the increment is calculated. I'm not going to go into this in detail, but the key is it's done on an annual basis. Tax refunds are deducted by the state in terms of calculating that. You subtract out the baseline number, and then you find out what that actual increment is. And you will get an annual report from the state that lists every business that reported and a second report that will list what their baseline was, what they reported, and what the state certified. And that's the number that's sent to you. It's not moving. Okay. So in 2020, our state and local tax revenues that were returned to the Authority in 2021 were 7.8 million. The very first year, it was $2,700. And the reason was the state did a net calculation. So they took revenue neutrality to the extreme, in our opinion. If a business reported $10,000 in profit this year but reported a $10,000 loss the next year, they subtracted the $10,000 from somebody who made $10,000, so it ended up being zero. So we only had an increase above the baseline of $2,700 the very first year. So we asked the state to reconsider how they were calculating, and they do. So now if it's a loss, it's a zero, and you only calculate the additional, the positive. I'm going to go from the screen that you have here. So you're looking at the page that says $7.8 million. That's what was presented to the CRIS Authority in October and then distributed in December. And it has to be distributed or committed by Authority Resolution or Budget by the end of the year. If it's not, it gets returned to the state. So it's a very short timeframe in which allocations have to be handled by the CRIS Authority.
The council needs to act.
The council does not act in that.
The authority.
It's the CRIS Authority that must act. And so you already have a list of projects that have been approved, and that's where the money is going to. It doesn't sound as complicated, but it's a timing issue that you must appropriate it by resolution before the end of the year, or it gets returned. And this just shows you, slide shows you how we've allocated that $7.8 million. A significant portion, almost 75% of $6 million, went to projects, to help finance projects or pay debt service on a project or finance the construction of a project. About a million one, which was 15, I can't even see this myself, debt service payments on Authority bond issues, so the Authority can float bonds on its own to finance projects, to lend money to developers to finance projects, which we've done. And then there's administrative and compliance, and those are two different numbers. The compliance is just paid out of the increment. The administration, there's a cap, so 5% of your increment can be used to cover administrative So just to show you the growth, so 2020 was in the middle of the pandemic, and we still received $7.1 million, $7.8 million. This is the following year, coming out of the pandemic, and the city received $10.1 million. So you actually see the growth of the city's increment over time from the $2,700 I mentioned early on. It says $130,000 because $128,000 of that was city taxes as opposed to, but you see over time, then, the state taxes grew to 3.5 and then gradually continued with the little blip in the middle of the pandemic. Quite frankly, we expected a much greater loss in the middle of the pandemic because restaurants had shut down, hotels had shut down. But it shows the degree with which all of the state taxes can actually benefit the CRIS. So you still had capital taxes, you still had bank share taxes, you still had personal income taxes being paid. In Lancaster, our financial assistance is then used to pay debt service, so a developer will go get their own financing, and the CRIS increment that they create from their project will be used to pay debt service on their project. Or it will be used by the CRIS Authority floating a bond issue and lending the money to a developer, and then the increment's being used to pay that bond issue. It can be used to acquire real estate, it can be used to do other qualified capital improvements, including tenant improvements to lease space for a business. Funds are distributed, as I said, in December and used to pay debt service on a number of things. So over the course of our program, 2014 would be our first year that businesses reported and money was received in 2015. So from 2015 to 2021, we've received $47.7 million in CRIS dollars. But here's the key. So that leveraged $129 million in private investment. So the CRIS program requires $1 of matching funds for every $5 the CRIS creates. You can see in our program, we're just kind of flipped that. And for a total investment over that, what, seven-year period of $167 million. So that's the other critical part. The CRIS is not the sole financing tool on most of these projects. It is a piece of that tool, a piece of the financing for a project. The key is the private investment that this brings in, and a private investment it brings into, in areas that are close to the CRIS, not in the CRIS, because people will see the investment that's taking place within the CRIS. So our CRIS financial assistance, we can act in a number of different ways as the CRIS Authority. We can act as a pass-through of state revenue to a project. So private developer gets his financing, we return his increment to pay his debt service. We could issue bonds to directly finance a project of the CRIS Authority. If the CRIS Authority wanted to do a project, it could. We could serve as a borrower on behalf of someone and then use the increment to pay that loan. We could be a conduit bond issuer, where we would issue a bond on behalf of someone without any financial responsibility. So it's a nonrecourse issue for the Authority. The financial responsibility is on the developer who's using the proceeds of that bond. And then establish debt service reserve funds to make sure your bonds can be paid back. So the core priorities in Lancaster, and I stress Lancaster because the beauty of the CRIS program is its flexibility. We looked at underutilized and vacant properties. We looked at catalytic or high economic impact projects, and we looked at supporting entrepreneurs and small business growth and sustaining key public facilities. Those are the four core priorities that we used in the city of Lancaster's program. They're broad. A lot of projects can fit into those four categories. And then guiding those four priorities, we used these three guidelines. So one is but for. So but for the CRIS financing, this project would. Those are the four core priorities that we used in the City of Lancaster's program. They're broad. A lot of projects can fit into those four categories. And then guiding those four priorities, we used these three guidelines. So one is but for. So but for the CRIS financing, this project would not have occurred. That there was a gap, that the project could not finance on its own and the CRIS authority could actually fill that gap and move the project forward. Removing impediments, environmental hazards, asbestos removal, ground pollution, those kinds of things. And then accelerating the development of a project. And that's probably key here because Erie has this list of investment projects that are set up to go and, and based on community conversations, that you could accelerate the completion of those projects with CRIS. So those are the three overall guidelines that we used. So I just want to now just focus on some examples. So this project, this was a 1970 urban renewal project. They demolished an entire city block, one block from the main square in the City of Lancaster, and this is what they built. A concrete, I call it a concrete monstrosity, but a concrete, and I was actually in that audience there at the, at the groundbreaking. But that's what was built and this is what it then became. So the, the west side was redeveloped two years after it was constructed. It was torn down. Armstrong World Industries and a bank built their headquarters there. On the other side, it was a department store on the, the right, far right-hand corner, shop space in the middle and then a hotel on the other side and a public space, public plaza space in the middle. That became our program and it encompassed all of these, underdeveloped, underutilized, long vacant, but it could be a high economic impact project. And this just shows you, the hotel was, will be renovated, the public space is renovated, 101 North Queen is renovated, all to kind of focus our attention and build off of the redevelopment that was done on the other side. So here you have Lancaster Square. This was the beginning of the demolition of the concrete and the restoration of the hotel. It had been a Hilton. It lasted as a Hilton for three years, then it became a Radisson for two, I think, and then it became privately owned and let that really to go to waste. But this was a perfect but for on the hotel side. So the CRIS assistance was only used to help assist in the financing of the acquisition of the project. So it was a $6.8 million acquisition loan that the CRIS pays on an annual basis, the debt service on that loan. The rest of the project was privately financed. So the only CRIS investment here was on the acquisition side. Holiday Inn today, new restaurant space, new hotel. It's now Holiday Inn Full Service Hotel, key to the Lancaster County Convention Center that's also downtown. This is the department store, which closed two years after it was built. And I don't know if you looked into the other picture, it had no windows. It's just a brick building and it actually became a bomb fuse factory for a number of years, just the fuses for a number of years. This was taken over by a private developer and he created the space you see below. So the top is what was built, below is, is what it looks like today. This was an example where we assisted the private developer who had financial capacity, but a stumbling block was asbestos. The building was filled with asbestos. So it was a $2 million project to remove this asbestos. So the CRIS paid, reimbursed them for the cost of removing the asbestos. The rest of the project was financed privately and it helped accelerate that project by removing those impediments. Again, that's what it looks like today. Cargis, two corporate headquarters in the building now, retail on the ground floor, condominiums on the upper floor. And then in the corner, next to the hotel, we created a, a 300-space parking garage for 101 North Queen and the corporate headquarters, but then worked with the Lancaster Public Library to move from an old falling apart building into a newly constructed building. So the public library is now also built off of this square. So perfect example of pulling together a project with CRIS that in all honesty would not have happened with CRIS. CRIS is paying the debt service on the bond, the parking authority issued to build the parking garage. And the library is a tenant rent free because the parking authority is having the debt service paid by the CRIS. So it, it, just a great way to look at all aspects of the program. So eligible uses, real estate, demolition, site prep, real estate development, soft costs like professional services, new construction, facade improvements, interior renovations, leasehold, and then FFNE. It cannot pay for maintenance and it can only pay for capital improvements if the useful life of the capital improvement has expired and you can do that. So a list of projects, Marriott expansion. So we had a Marriott that was built as part of the Lancaster County Convention Center project in 2009. It looked to expand by 100 rooms. It looked to the CRIS to do that. The CRIS financing allowed for the acquisition of the three vacant buildings you see on the left-hand side, allowed for their demolition and allowed for site improvements. The construction of what you see on the right-hand side was privately financed then by bonds issued by the redevelopment authority, but they are the non-recourse bonds that I talked about. So the developer is ultimately responsible for doing that. So added 100 rooms. 29 East King Street was across the street, a property that had been vacant for probably 10 years for the most part. We used CRIS to redo the facade of the building. And then the interior renovations were privately financed and this was done with the cooperation and participation of a corporate entity within Lancaster County that then moved their corporate headquarters into this building. They kept their company warehousing and manufacturing facilities where they were, but they just moved the corporate headquarters here. Southern Market was an old market at the southern end of our city, kind of our entryway into the southern portion residential neighborhoods of the city. Had sat vacant, it was used as a city council chamber, as a Chamber of Commerce building for a number of years. They both moved into new facilities and had sat vacant. A local community development corporation worked with the city to acquire the property. So it is the owner of the property and it master leases it to a private developer who did the construction work, creating the food hall within the contents or the constraints of this Southern Market building. The key for this is that the same developer is building a 19-story 55 and over facility right across the street. They wanted to make sure that the control of this property was critical to them to do that. But that is being done privately financed. There are no CRIS dollars being used for that. And I will tell you why a number of projects don't use CRIS, because prevailing wage rates must be paid when CRIS assistance is used. So there are times where acquisition and site work and demo are the best opportunities for CRIS, but it also increases your match, your private investment. Part of the convention center, this is on the other corner across from Southern Market, is the Thaddeus Stevens and Lilia Hamilton Smith properties. Assuming most people know who they are. And they were restored on the exterior during the construction of the convention center, but the interior was left to go for future leasing to our historical society. They are now, have a long-term lease and they are creating this Center for History and Democracy. That will be an interactive piece that's both accessible by the public from the outside, but also from the inside of the convention center. Here, a, a $14 million project, there's been $4 million of CRIS committed over a 10-year period to help pay the cost of the project. The exterior company, this is a warehouse on the, that northwest triangle that you saw on our map, a warehouse that had sat vacant for years and years. This is a company that has facilities elsewhere in Lancaster County. Their employees wanted to be downtown, so they worked with us, they acquired the property. Again, CRIS was used to pay the debt, it will be used to pay the debt service on the acquisition, as long as they create enough to pay that. They get back whatever they create, but they don't get back any more than they create. This is in the southeast corner of our map that you saw. Conestoga Plaza was a former landfill site, had sat vacant, had a problem bar built onto it for a number of years that was eventually closed. This is a community development corporation, Spanish American Civic Association Economic Development Corporation took on this project. Again, CRIS assistance was limited to acquisition and site improvements. The construction of the project was financed with other financing that the CDC put together. And today it looks like this. It brought a 10,000 square foot grocery store to the neighborhood. It brought a 10,000 square foot Family Dollar store to the neighborhood. And then it created this space of smaller retail spaces within the neighborhood. So it kind of reestablished the business core center for that neighborhood. Small business growth, this is an example. This restaurant space, the restaurant that was there closed. They were having trouble getting financing to purchase the assets of the restaurant despite their experience in, in operating restaurants, so they came to the CRIS authority. CRIS authority agreed to return the increment they create to pay the debt service on their loan and that was enough for the bank to provide the financing, knowing that that annual allocation would go back to pay debt service. That's what it looks like on the inside. 551 West, this is in the western part of the City of Lancaster, a small bar, neighborhood bar that wanted to expand. It's a project, a building all by itself, but the buildings around it were once a commercial center for that neighborhood. So the opportunity to recreate that commercial center is what made this project attractive to the CRIS authority. And again, we assisted then with the renovation of the facility and the expansion. Double C, again, a vacant property in the core of the downtown. These gentlemen own another restaurant outside of the CRIS and they use CRIS, in this case, both for acquisition and for construction. And this is an unusual case of where the financial assistance is actually longer than a 10-year period. So the financial assistance here lasts as long as their mortgage lasts. But again, they only get the increment they create. They don't get any extra increment. We were able during COVID to use CRIS to provide $25,000 grants to small businesses within the CRIS, out of the CRIS increment that we had to help them get through the pandemic. And many of those small businesses would tell you today that that was critical. We went through two different rounds of $25,000 grants. And in that case, they were able to use it for any cost, not just capital improvements. We also then floated a bond issue to create a $5 million loan fund for small businesses. So this loan fund will allow small businesses to acquire property, to renovate property, to buy new equipment, to expand their business, as long as it's within the CRIS. I'm not going to get into the detail of these, but it's a $25,000 grant and a $100,000 loan. You can get a combination of either one. You could get $25,000 just to do your facade, if that's what you chose to do. And then you can use the increment you create to help repay the loan if you also received a loan. That's on the $100,000 and we still require the match. An example here, this was a vacant space in our downtown bank building at street level. It's Blazing Jays, they make hot chicken sandwiches, not, not hot, but spicy hot chicken sandwiches. The CRIS assistance grant helped them buy their hood, which is expensive. And it was a cost that they didn't have the financing for and couldn't get the financing for. They now have three other locations that they've created since they opened this one. Concrete book bar. So these two young ladies got a grant from an organization in New York City. They are both poets and writers and they wanted to create a community space. So on that neighborhood economic development project, I showed you that corner property, they created a book bar. So they dispense wine and then they have books and that's a community space for poetry readings, whatever. Great project. Passerine took an old property that had sat vacant but was small and created a new restaurant with a $25,000 grant and a $100,000 loan. Drift Spa was in the Marriott Hotel. The spa closed during pandemic and never reopened. These two young ladies came in and wanted to reopen it and they used the $25,000 grant to purchase some new equipment for the spa. This is an example and it kind of shows you the partnerships that exist within our CRIS program. So Community First Fund is a local community development financial institution. EDC Finance, you have a very similar organization here in Erie County, provided additional loan, small business financing. High Industries is a realtor that's very active in the City of Lancaster. And then the Lancaster City Alliance, Isay Noodle was in a cramped space. They were growing, so they actually helped them purchase what was a problem bar within the downtown, took the problem bar, acquired it and created a larger Isay noodle. So just for us in the City of Lancaster, sustaining key public facilities that are economic drivers was critical for us. We had two, the Convention Center Authority and Clipper Magazine Stadium, which is our minor league baseball, but unaffiliated. It's the Atlantic, it's the Atlantic League. So the Convention Center received a $5 million over a number of years for capital improvements. So as a full-service Marriott or full-service Sheraton, you are required to replace everything every seven or eight years. So assistance was provided to them, so they created an F, I'm sorry for acronyms, FFNE, Furniture Fixers and Equipment Reserve Fund that they can then use over time to do that replacement. The stadium, on the other hand, is owned by the County Redevelopment Authority. And you know, the County Redevelopment Authority doesn't have any revenue stream, so it's leased to a private entity, but CRIS funds are used for capital improvements. So the field replacement, CRIS funds were used to replace the field every 10 years. CRIS funds are used to replace the roof, replace HVAC systems, so capital improvements, lifetime, things that have lost or gone beyond their useful life. And it's, it's made a huge difference because baseball doesn't generate money, especially minor league baseball. But the, the private group continues to operate and actually does annually over a million dollars of donations back to community organizations as a result. So we had a number of projects that were actually in our original application that then were financed without CRIS assistance. So they saw the other investments that were being done, but they chose to do their projects without CRIS assistance. Or they could have other opportunities, like the Fulton Theater Foundation had greater opportunities to finance the project. So this is really small print, but what does the CRIS program mean to the City of Lancaster? It supports redevelopment efforts of properties that have been vacant or underutilized, some for decades, some for 40 years or more, in the core of our downtown. Creates a ripple effect for investor confidence, so they see the confidence of investors in the CRIS programs and they invest in the, in the city and the downtown. It equalizes the economic disadvantages of developing in the city versus the suburbs. This is kind of an important one. The cost to develop in your city is higher than the cost to develop in green space out in the county. CRIS can help offset that difference. So it may be the, the, the issue that brings a developer into the city as opposed to developing somewhere out in the county. Enables recruitment of newer expanding businesses because of the opportunity for financing. It provides financial capital that banks and other financial institutions cannot provide due to requirements, due to rating requirements, due to federal requirements. Yeah. But CRIS can, can fill that gap. And then it does generate state and local tax revenues over and above what you give up. So again, this investment outside of the 130 acres will create additional tax revenues for you as well. And what are in the indicators of our success? So number of identified vacant, underutilized properties that have become active as highest and best use instead of an underutilized use. It has increased the assessed value of properties, strengthening the city's tax base. It has increased state and local CRIS tax revenues. It has increased earned income tax revenue, not just for the city, but for surrounding school districts and municipalities as a result of employees that work downtown and live out there. The number of businesses opening or expanding. The number of businesses opening or expanding in the city has increased as a result of the CRIS assistance, especially the Small Business Fund. And then new job opportunities, reduction of the city's unemployment rate, and then, most importantly, private investment leveraged with that CRIS assistance. So that in a nutshell is the success story
[laughter]
of the CRIS, of the CRIS program in Lancaster. And it's just an example of what the CRIS program can do for Erie. As I said before, the beauty of CRIS is its flexibility. So even if you have an application today that lists projects from your comprehensive plan, from Infinite Erie, it doesn't mean those are the only projects it can fund. As your increment grows, you will have increment that's not dedicated to any one particular project for debt service. So you can do other projects. It would just come through the CRIS authority. They would review it if they think it's a good project. It would obviously still go through city planning and development, zoning, all of that, but then it's looked at by the state, and then it's another project on your list. So that's the beauty of the CRIS. You do have a set in your application. You don't have to go back to the state for approval to use CRIS for those projects, but you can add projects over time. You can remove property from the CRIS and reserve that acreage, and then put other properties in over time. So it, it's truly a flexible program, but here's the key. Why do you need this program? You need this program because the city of Erie, like most third-class cities in the state of Pennsylvania, do not have a dedicated source of annual income that they can put to economic development. You have Community Development Block Grant, you have Home Investment Partnership that you can do to housing rehab and, and community development projects, but you do not have a source, dedicated source, annuals dedicated source for economic development projects. You have a great list of projects. I've been looking at these, but you also see the dollar amounts of those projects. So consider if you get annually 10 million or more that you can dedicate to move, start moving those projects forward. That's what the CRIS authority can do for you. Be quiet.
We talking about a nine-member board?
So in, in Lancaster, we have a nine-member board, we have an 11-member board. We have nine voting members and we have two non-voting members. So we have a non-voting member from the mayor's office and a non-voting member from the senator's office. The nine members of the board were appointed by the senator and by the mayor. And the initial board members were created by those two mutually discussing the appointments. And we're looking at skill sets. So you're looking at financing, you're looking at real estate, you're looking at development. You know, so those are the kind of skill sets you, you need on your CRIS authority because of what they're, they're looking at economic development projects. That's what they're looking at. So, and that's the initial board. So that, your, your initial board has scattered terms, so over the course of time, your board membership will change. As I said, we have residents, we have business owners. They must be a taxpayer in, in the city of, but the local services tax serves as a taxpayer. So if you have an attorney that may not live in the city, but you want legal advice on your CRIS authority, he pays that local services tax if his office is in the city. So I, it, for me, it's really important to look at the, the skill sets you need to look at an economic development program that is a long-term program.
At what point in the process did you, was it at the beginning that you hired an executive director for the CRIS? Like, how does that work with only the 5% going to admin when the first year return is so small?
So the first couple of years, I was the Director of Economic Development for the city. I worked with Mayor Gray and Senator Smucker in developing the CRIS program. So the city paid my costs as the director, and we paid for Dean Azoski, who is our compliance person that we hired. She's a private business. And then in the third year, the city was reimbursed out of the CRIS funds for the cost that they had. And then there were sufficient funds through the 5% that we could cover that cost.
Thank you.
We've got a couple of questions. With the money coming in just at the end of the year, you know, most traditional funding mechanisms have a little more steady of a payment, you know? So did you guys come up with any, is, did you do a lot of the funding yourself or come up with some creative mechanisms so that that short window of actually distributing funds was handled?
Yeah. So, so with the projects that were approved as part of the application, it was, it was easy because you already had a financial structure in place for those projects, and you knew how much CRIS was going to go to those projects. So that money was set aside. The issue was what I call unallocated CRIS. So out of our 10 million last year, we only had about four that was allocated to debt service. So we had about $6 million available to us for other things. Now, we used it to pay off a bond issue. So a 20-year bond issue was paid off in two and a half years. So then we feel comfortable doing another one. But you, it, it depends how you set it up. So our application period for new projects is open year-round, so we don't have one set time, so a person can come in and apply at any time. If it's a new business, you know, they have to create their baseline, so they're not going to get assistance for two years out because of that baseline calculation, and then it's the following year that they would report. So on the financing side, the key is working with the financial institutions to make sure they understand how the flow of CRIS dollars work, and that it only comes once a year. So normally what we're doing is we're paying them in December and reimbursing them for the debt service payments they made that year. Or it's being placed into a debt service reserve fund to make the debt payments for the following year.
Yeah. By approved projects, you know, you approve the 130 acres, is that, and then you have to go through and approve projects every year by the state?
Yes. So we had a series of seven projects in our initial application, and then we had what we called a Phase Two, that were kind of loosely defined projects. That Phase Two, we have to go back to the state for approval of those projects. The state normally takes about 60 to 90 days to approve a project. So it, it, you know, usually about six months from start to finish to have a project approved.
Any particular setbacks other than obviously COVID?
No. To be honest, that 3 million, I'm surprised how quickly we moved to 10. But I probably shouldn't be because we have three corporate centers, headquarters, that moved into the CRIS during that seven-year period. Now, as, as a CRIS authority and as an individual that works with the CRIS authority, I can't tell you how much any one business creates as an increment. The state does not allow you to know that. Only the business knows that, and we know that, but we can't tell anyone else. But I can tell you this. So out of our increment, 10% of our 500 businesses create 90% of our increment. There are some businesses that create $10.
Yeah.
You know? But they report every year. But they report because of the way we set the system up, and that's Dean Azoski. She, she develops this working relationship with those small businesses. The big businesses are fine. They, they, they have tax departments that do it. But she works with the small businesses. You bring your box of receipts into her, and she will help you fill out your form. And bars have done that. They've brought boxes of receipts, because it's a little bit complicated, it's a little bit overwhelming, but it works and they do. We have about an 80% report rate, which is really good.
If I have an idea that I want to build in Lancaster?
Yes.
Do I have to make the presentation to all nine people, or how do I go about?
No. So we have a project review committee that has board representation and at-large appointments. You present an initial review of your project, a summary of your project. That committee will decide whether or not you can file a full application. And then they review the full application and make a recommendation to the board on approval or denial. And it's worked really well.
Are you allowed to come back with that? Like, if they deny it?
Yes. So if we deny it, we'll tell them why. We'll tell them what they need to work on. We had two young men who had this idea for a juice bar, really well-meaning individuals, but it was their first business, you know, and they just didn't have a clue, to be honest. And so we worked with them. We hooked them up with SCORE. So yeah, you work with anyone who comes in the door and try to make it a viable project.
So this would be a working group. I mean, it's not a, put your name on there, Eric, and I'm part of the directors.
No. You have very serious responsibilities. You are allocating state and local tax dollars back into your community.
Right. It's time-sensitive, too.
It's time-sensitive. You know, I always told my staff, time is money to a small business and to a developer. So if you can do it in 60 days, do it in 60 days. Don't take nine months. But it, we, the system we set up, I think, works well. You get that initial review of a project, and then the next, if they can get everything together, the very next month, they can come back. And that same month, the project review committee and the board would act. So we would do approvals in 60 days if everything is together. And then you depend on the state to act quickly.
What type of reporting or outcome measurements are required by the CRIS staff members or the authority?
So when their applications are filed, we ask, we have an application form that asks for potential job creation, investment, and all of that. You do, are now required to annually report to the state on the job creation. You are required to annually report on the matching funds that have been invested in project and the total project costs. That's the only required reports to the state, and those are really the only things that we track, other than the failure of a business that was assisted. But if a business fails, their assistance stops. So it's always related to their business income.
Does Lancaster have an environmental advisory council or any sort of mechanism where the project may be approved, but then also goes through an additional set of eyes with, with that sort of council?
I would say that's to the city side of approval. So our current mayor is, sustainability is important to her. So when it goes through a land development planning process, those are some of the things. We also look at stormwater, tree planting, all of those kinds of things are reviewed by the city as a development project works its way through.
Would this be a merging of your group with the CRIS? Or, I'm confused, because I'm carrying a lot of things that you're trying to do, so what CRIS gives us the money to do.
Exactly. So, you know, we've taken on some really big projects this last couple of years because you guys have, we're all vision to give us the funding through ARP. But that funding's now running out, but there's a lot more projects out there that we'd like to tackle. In fact, we couldn't get through what we got through if it not for ARP money that you gave us. Those projects would still be sitting there, blighted and vacant. So the CRIS funding, ideally, we would take our projects to the board and they'd say, yay, yeah, keep going. So yes, we would hope to work very closely with them. And so on one side, we would work very closely with you, with the CRIS board and, or authority, and present our projects. On the other side, the funding itself would give Chris the tools he needs because we, you know, these, these things are capital stack to build out these projects are complicated and difficult, and he's always trying to fund other projects that aren't our own, that we don't have the resources for. So this, this is a tool that is a big tool in our toolbox. It would really fill out that box in multiple ways. I think Chris is on the line. He could talk to it from the financial perspective. We've talked about issuing a bond for ourselves multiple times and just haven't been able to figure out how to make that work. And even if we did do it, we wouldn't be able to do it on the scale that we could for the CRIS. It would only be for our own projects. So there's a, there's a lot of benefits to this that would really help move the city forward and these projects forward. Because we're, the projects we're working on now for the city, we're done if we don't have the CRIS money. We can't do anymore. Large-scale projects like EMI or Quinte or Savakio.
Certainly not in an accelerated manner.
Oh, no.
Savakio, though, is, that's one of the, isn't that a Keystone investment or Keystone opportunity?
It is in an opportunity zone, but that didn't help us get funding.
It's in a federal opportunity zone.
It's not a state one?
Don't, Chris can answer that.
Chris can answer that, but regardless, it didn't provide funding for that. So.
And initially, if you're working with the state, you can look at your Keystone Innovation Zone and Keystone Opportunity Zones and potentially change the boundaries if you have a project that really needs to be accelerated, but it's, it's languishing because the funding isn't there on a regular basis to help you finance something or to pay debt service on a bond.
Right. So it is an, I'm pretty sure it's a Koz, but it didn't help us.
Chris, can you clarify the zone?
Yeah, I just pulled up the map.
Yeah, but it didn't help us, so.
Internet did it fast enough. It is.
Yeah, so.
Chris, can you hear us?
I see him, but I think he's muted.
Sorry, couldn't be there. So I, I don't know what all I missed or.
He and I have talked a lot about it from a, a financial tool. For me, you know, I have a long list of projects that are in the playbook and that aren't in the playbook, that I would love to be able to have the resources to, to tap.
So the key about the CRIS program is it's 30 years from the date you issue your first bond. That's the length of, so Lancaster's program ends in 2045. At that point, we would not receive any more CRIS assistance, but if you've established revolving loan funds with bond issues, those loan funds remain available to you over the long term.
No. You're a border city, as, as we are. Did you recruit heavily out of Maryland to bring business in?
No. To be honest, we haven't. The Chamber has, works regionally.
Yeah.
And I guess it reaches over into Maryland a little bit. Our economic development company is probably the primary recruiter of new businesses into Lancaster County. But Lancaster City is four and a half square miles. We're like this, and then we have these two little tangents where we have commercial property. So we don't really have, like your 12th Street corridor, we don't really have opportunity like that in Lancaster, so we're really looking at corporate opportunity. So put your headquarters here, keep your manufacturing facility where it is, you know, that, that kind of thing.
I know that was one of the drawbacks with NIZ was that they swooped in all of the surrounding business and the neighboring communities, and that's why CRIS has the baseline aspect of it.
Well, I, I would tell you, so the, the difference between what occurred in the NIZ and the CRIS, we did not encourage the discounting of lease payments with CRIS assistance. So we didn't say, we're going to give you CRIS assistance to redevelop this property, and now you can offer that business $6 a square foot instead of what everybody else is offering out in the suburbs, which is $25 a square foot. We didn't do that. The businesses that came in, came in because, in most cases, because their employees were saying, we want to be downtown. We don't have places to walk to eat lunch and stuff like, we want to be downtown. And these businesses had the opportunity to do that. So I, I think, and that's what occurred initially in Allentown, that these, what I call unrealistic lease rates were being provided to businesses to bring them into new constructed buildings. And it did create a.
Regional problems, yeah.
Quite a ruckus.
And I'm, so I'm just looking at that being like, okay, so we can't reach to the suburbs the way they did, you know, 25 years ago when that happened.
Yeah.
But we can reach just over the state lines, and you're being right up against Maryland, you have that same opportunity. So I was just curious if you played around with that.
Yeah, it, it, I think it depends on how much assistance you're giving to a developer. So in our case, our assistance is but for the acceleration, the environmental hazard. So in our case, our assistance is the but for the acceleration, the environmental hazard. If we would have financed 101 North Queen ninety percent, then he would have been able to offer these outrageous lease rates. Instead, he's charging twenty dollars a square foot, because he financed it on his own. So it, it really depends on how you're going to set your program up. If you want to try that to attract businesses into the city. The CRIS program doesn't prevent you from doing that.
I was just curious if they.
I would encourage.
I see, Chris.
Chris, do you want to talk now?
Chris, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
No.
We're working on hearing.
But he can smile.
Kim, did you want to add anything?
So I saw you're on the agenda. Yeah, we can talk about how this aligns with Infinite Erie and the investment playbook. So as Randy alluded to, and others have as well, that this is a grand opportunity to bring together multiple plans and put those into action, which is what Infinite Erie does, right? So you have Erie Refocus, Activating Our Vision. You have an investment playbook that was created with upwards of thirty-five transformational investment opportunities that if invested in at all levels, will accelerate, you know, Erie's next Renaissance, right? A transformative opportunity for, for the county as a whole, but specifically. The playbook has the majority of projects that are focused in the core of the city of Erie, place-based projects in the downtown, in the West 12th Street corridor, along commercial corridors in your east and west bayfront neighborhoods, as well as others. So this is an opportunity to have this tool to, again, help accelerate the implementation of those projects. So it could be, you know, where you have these complex financial stacks identifying the CRIS allocation as a key piece to that. And as Randy also alluded to, when you submit the application to the state, you have to have a list of investment-ready projects that this increment can be allocated to in the coming year and years ahead. So we believe that the investment playbook is that opportunity. Again, you have those investment-ready projects within the city that are, that are ready for this investment and can be accelerated with the allocation from the CRIS specifically. So that, that provides a plan, investment-ready projects, to show the state that Erie is ready to allocate resources to projects, once that, once that increment is transferred to the authority.
Is that an unpaid board?
It is an unpaid board, yes.
Public authority.
Do we have a map of roughly what area the CRIS could cover, I see areas, do we know that?
Maybe you want to touch on that a little bit?
We've started to work on mapping that out. But that's work that would continue with the board, with the authority. We have to submit the map, the master business list, the plan, everything with our application. There will be a public hearing, all of that. All the businesses have to be contacted in advance to make sure that they agree to be in the CRIS. And that all has to be publicly advertised. So there's a lot of work to be done between now and November. We believe, we're hoping, that the, that the application portal will open. In the legislation, it says that the window opens from November 1st to the 30th. So we're working hard to have everything ready by then.
And if you think about, if you can visualize, you know, the city as it relates to the investment playbook and strategizing those one hundred and thirty acres around those projects, I mean, you're talking Parade Street corridor, you're talking the West 12th Street corridor, downtown State Street, Federal Hill area, you're talking the West 8th Street Commercial Corridor in our West Bay Front, the Burton School Project and the Buffalo Road Corridor revitalization. So it's, as we, you know, think about those one hundred and thirty acres and aligning it with the projects that are investment-ready or will ultimately be investment-ready, and ensuring that it hits all of those areas of the city. Because again, that's where these projects have been prioritized and supported by public, private, and philanthropic leaders, and they're interested in investing and leveraging their resources as well, making sure that we cover all of those areas where those projects would be implemented. Yes.
I remember in the playbook discussions and the public presentation, the concern of capacity of contractors in construction.
Yes.
How will, what efforts are we going to take on to ensure that we can fulfill the need and ability that would be there with CRIS?
Sure. So I would say, from, from an investment playbook perspective, those conversations have been happening with the practitioners at the table to say, I mean, they've identified, as you know, that that is a top challenge for them. We, it's great if we can bring in millions and millions of dollars to do rehabilitation and home repairs, but we don't have the people to physically do the work. So we have been in conversations to think about a short-term pilot program for a construction trades training that would allow for some on-the-job training in these neighborhoods as home repairs are happening in, in the best area in our West Bay Front and S S J Neighborhood Network and others, to see how a pilot project might work, while also strategizing around what a long-term solution to that might be. If it's a, you know, a larger construction trades training facility or program, or whatever that case might be. But those conversations are absolutely happening.
I have no other questions, and I did say I was heading out about twelve hours tomorrow.
Thank you so much for being here.
I look forward to it. We need funds, so this is a way for us to be together. Then, you know, let's hear more and have the conversation. Thanks, Chuck, for getting this all the way.
Thank you. Take care.
Go ahead, Chris.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, sorry about the technical issues. Sorry I can't be there, but just wanted to call in and already mentioned, I'm not sure what all has been covered, but, you know, if there's any questions I can help with. I know there's aspects of this that I just think are going to help us, you know, move beyond a lot of the short-term funding that we have now, a lot of the A R P funding that's enabled us to, to really move these projects. You've heard me say before, we really need to identify what is going to carry us beyond this short-term infusion of capital here. So I really think this has a good shot at being a sustainable tool that, that once A R P is passed, that we can continue our momentum. You know, I just think there's a lot of components to this, that even beyond that, where it's going to help us really recalibrate a lot of our risk. Right now, when we're doing these large projects, we're taking on a lot of risk because of how we have to structure debt and how we have to build out a capital stack. And I know, in talking with Randy, and I saw Randy there, so I'm sure he covered this already, but, you know, there are ways to structure lending and mechanisms that are non-recourse, back to the city and back to the authority, ways that we don't have to be on the hook for funding all of these projects. So I just think there's a lot of ways we can be creative. We can create, you know, debt service funds to help not only small businesses, but to help ourselves redevelop sites and do it in a way that's not constantly hitting our debt capacities as, as a municipality and as authorities. So I just think it holds a lot of promise, and we've always, we've always said we needed a dedicated and fairly predictable stream of, of resources. It's really been funded in fits and starts, and that, and that's been a, that's been a major challenge as well. So I think there's a tremendous potential here that could help us keep the momentum going.
Thanks, Chris.
Hopefully that came through.
So you just flew in for this. Who flies you in for this? Yeah. Oh, you said you were jet-lagged. I was like, oh.
I was in Scotland.
Oh, well, that's.
Thank you. Senator's office is here. Do you want to add anything?
Well, let's do all my knowns. Senator has been working hard for this since he got in my office. Really pleased with it. Originally, our past governor was not for it. And he's had a lot of conversations with the port and the community, and it sounds like it's something that's going to have a possibility in for community security. And I hope he's, he has support of this, and he's going to be there helping for us.
Next, our next step is we work on the ordinance, and city council passes the creation of the authority, so we can finish working on all of the, all of the different elements that have to go into the application.
Do we have a timeline on that?
We hope to give you an ordinance in July.
We pass it. We should probably have those conversations ahead of time. Yep, yeah. I mean, I, I think what's. Yeah. Now, I, I'd had a chance to talk to the other CRIS directors around the state and ask about how that part of it looked in their particular programs. You guys are a pretty unique authority. I, you're the only municipal authority I could find in the entire state where a state senator makes appointments to it.
No, actually, the NIZ.
The NIZ, all right, all right.
Chris and the NIZ are the only two.
Yeah, yeah. The other, the other CRISs around the state.
And the reason, I mean, the rationale behind that. Look at this list of state tax dollars, like both the tax dollars. You're using state tax.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're using state tax revenues in this program that are being returned back to the city of Erie. They are being paid by your businesses in the city of Erie, but they're being returned back to you. And it was because of that, that we came to the agreement of the appointments. Now, in Lancaster, it's six and three on our appointments. So, but yeah, most municipal authorities, they're local authorities, and they're created by the local entity. But it, it had to do with the resources that are being used within the program.
We have, you know, we have a number of local authorities where the governor has appointments. You know, that's, that's why we, at least what the Convention Center and the Port Authority. So this is, so that is, that is a pretty unique thing. And then as soon as, as soon as it hit the newspaper that, that the makeup that was being suggested, we got letters from the state reps as well, making sure that everybody got to the table. So, you know, there was a lot of discussion after that happened.
So from my perspective, so I played a role in who got appointed. Because for me, it's about skill sets. It's not about appointments. It's about skill sets. This is a unique program, and it's, it's run locally. You have financial accountability for your program. So the skill sets that you need, that's what's important on your board, and who serves on that board.
I should probably be careful saying this with Tina sitting next to me, but we've had some political challenges in our community that if I was to project out the next thirty-two years of appointments, I have some hesitancy of having county-wide elected officials making up the majority of my board. Please don't say anything. As, as well as, as, as well as the. As well as the D I board. So I have some, some real concerns about the makeup as it was, because the people making those appointments change every couple of years. And I imagine the next thirty-two years, the person making up the majority of the appointments to our board may be someone with a challenging demographic voting them into that county-wide seat.
So I, so from a procedural process, the nominations are made by the senator and the mayor. The appointments are made by city council. I, I just want to point that when you make that comment. It is city council who appoints the board members, because it is a municipal authority created by the city council of Erie, city of Erie. So the nominations come from the senator and from the mayor to city council. When a term expires, city council has to agree to reappoint.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I mean, from a procedural standpoint, that's important.
Did you have instances of council not following the recommendations of the authority?
I'm open to talking to you guys anytime.
If you have a good idea, I want to hear it. And if it's better than an idea I had, we'll appoint your guy or gal.
Yeah, and that's just, you know, when I've been talking to members of council, I, there's plenty of people on council where I trust their first choice more than potentially your fourth choice. That's where the, the kind of breakdown comes. And especially seeing the way some of our regional boards have had such dramatic changes in the last year and a half. I'm, you know, I, I like the idea, especially as the state reps also sent us letters asking for a seat at the table. I like the idea of a broad group of people making their suggestions and recommendations for those appointments. You know, the senators offered their suggestions, or I'm sorry, the representatives offered their suggestion of what it would look like. That, I, I made a follow-up phone call after awards app, you know, obviously. And, you know, I think, I think having, especially in, not, but the stuff that's happening at some of the other authorities with county-wide elected officials has me puzzled. And honestly, as I've been talking to people on council, I'm looking at the spots where our subcommittees have a stake, and I'm thinking that, you know, our downtown subcommittee, our public works subcommittee, and our economic development subcommittee, I'm not even saying this as I want to make an appointment. I don't. I'll, if, whatever we come to a conclusion, I'm not putting a name on the table. But I want to make sure the city council's putting names on the table. I think the first choice of these different committee members are, would be valuable, and they would be valuable representation matters for communities that maybe yourself or the senator don't get into quite as much as some of our council members do. Which is another reason why I wouldn't be the one making an appointment. But whatever format we would want to discuss that, I don't know what our sunshine law rules are, but that's probably something where two or three council members should get together with you and have a discussion as to what the best makeup of that would be.
Do you want to add the liaisons for each of those subcommittees in the council?
Sunshine law might be a little bit tricky on that. We, we have to keep it a little bit smaller of a group. If I take one of them or two of them, I think that might be the best way to handle it. But I don't remember how the sunshine law stuff works on that, if we're allowed to have that conversation.
I think as long as it's less than a quorum, and it's mostly for educational and learning, and you're not literally deliberating or coming to some sort of conclusion.
Yeah, similar to how we have at our solicitors' meetings on Wednesday, where two council members sit there with you and talk about how we'd like an ordinance drafted.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Well, we, yeah, I think that would be significant to do sometime soon.
Can, and I had one point. So we talked about the project review committee. So they are the people that are seeing those new projects coming in all the time. That's another place that you could have other representation beyond what is on the board. There's no magic number to that project. I mean, you don't want a huge project review committee, but there's no magic to that number. So that is another opportunity for, perhaps for representatives from some of your committees to serve on that committee, reviewing those projects as they come through.
Just trying to take this as the steps come before us, but you guys have a nine-person board. That's, that's larger than the other CRIS boards. The other ones went with five. Any particular reason for your number?
Five is, five is the required size for a municipal authority. No, it was just conversation. We decided on nine.
Yeah. In talking to the other directors, you know, I like the, the five, I think, kind of makes the other, the Bethlehem one, all five are appointed by the mayor, and it sounds like it's a pretty closely working with the mayor board on that. I like the idea of nine and broader representation. Anything else from anyone else?
I have a little, little question, I guess.
I don't mean to make fun or anything, but we pay these folks. We don't pay them, but they all have paid positions. And we're going to ask an unpaid board to make decisions for people who are making money doing this job? You know what I'm saying? Is there a? I'm not sure if I'm.
So, my comment would be that's the control.
The fact that we don't get paid.
Is you have volunteers who represent your community playing the decision-making role on recommendations being presented by your paid staff.
Got you. Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
So, it's really a decision-making mechanism and not in any way of delivery or implementation?
Exactly.
Just decisions.
It's a financing authority.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we should remember that city council and city hall is involved all the way through the process before it gets to the CRIS authority, right? It has to go through zoning, it has to go through planning. I mean, the authority is almost the last step. For the financing, so it's not like that there's no voice here from city hall. City hall, as it always does, has a major voice in any project. So, don't, don't lose sight of that.
Any reason why just the state senator in Lancaster and not the state representatives?
No.
Okay.
No. There was no objection from the state representative.
Because you guys have a pretty similar, like, political demographic as we do in that it's a, usually a red county with red reps and then a couple of blue reps in the city and a blue city. So, you have, you have some of the same political elements as us on that.
Very much so, yeah.
And I, I like our state senator. This isn't a, yeah, I'm, I've already talked about who he wants to appoint, and if he takes any less seats, then it would, I'd probably want to see some of those people get appointed anyways. That's not the, the challenge here. It's thirty-two years and seeing the political climate nationally and some of the other county-wide seats that are held, and my concerns as to how those would be in the future.
My only comment would be that on the CRIS authority side, we've not had any issues.
Good, good.
My only comment would be that it's really important that whatever decision is made, that we go down with a very unified, very solid, very cohesive application because there is no guarantee that we will get this. And to the senator's credit, he has been the only advocate for this application and this CRIS for years and years. When I was at the state, he was pushing it.
Yeah.
He's been pushing it for years. If anybody deserves an appointment to the authority, it's him. But we absolutely have to go down unified. This, this, there could be no dissension here. This has to be a kumbaya moment for us.
Yeah, I just want to put an exclamation point on that. I mean, I think you all know, as soon as Harrisburg gets wind, if there's any, you know, discourse happening or whatever the case might be, then, again, this is not a done deal by any stretch of the imagination, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I fully understand, and I expect that we're going to put together the best that we can, and that the, the suggestion of putting more voices in that room is only to make sure that it's even better. All right, is there any other discussion that needs to happen here? All right, thank you all for coming.
Thank you all. Greatly appreciated.